Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, and in which there is justice.
Dr. Bloom is excused. Brittany Holt. Yep, sorry. Jennifer Coleman is excused. Greg Bernard.
Here.
Aaron Chapiya.
Here.
Jay Erickson.
Here.
Mark Friedman is excused.
All right, Getaway LLC.
Have a representative?
Um, no, nobody's here.
He's here.
But we do have a letter from them.
And we're just releasing the performance bond?
Yes.
Does there any, anybody have any questions about this? Okay.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, even included in your package, his email on his inspection.
All right, great. Can we get a, I would love to entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion that the planning board recommends to the town board to release of Getaway LLC Quaker Valley Farms Performance Bond in the amount of seventy-five hundred dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. All right. Darrell's House. So, yeah. Hey Kurt?
Hi. Good evening all.
How you doing Kurt?
Good, good. Kurt Johnson, J Group Designs, here for Darrell's House. When we were here last meeting, I don't think there were any major concerns from the board. It was referred to Ron Gaynor for review, and then also the board requested the lease agreement for the off-site parking, which we provided to the board. We do have Ron's review. I'm sure Ron will speak to it, but I just, I think in his review, the major things that were there were just to have this board deem that the application is substantially complete, entertain a seeker determination, refer to the two outside agencies, which would be County, Dutchess County Planning and the Fire Marshal, and then potentially schedule a public hearing on the project.
Um, are there any other updates to the plans from what we looked at last time?
Basically, seven hundred square foot addition to the front, no change in the occupancy on the building.
Yep. No change to the parking, no change to any of the operations?
Correct.
Right. Um, does anybody have any questions or points of discussion?
And go over Ron's memo, yeah.
Yeah, do you want to just give us the headlines on the memo?
Sure. I think the entire board is familiar with the venue itself. It's been in existence since nineteen eighty-two. It's long been a performance venue featuring live acts. Most recent activities that have occurred would be the, there were some legal issues that were addressed in a two thousand seventeen court stipulation, and that established or confirmed the maximum occupancy that's permitted. The current proposal does not change the intended occupancy that's permitted currently, so as a result, there's no impacts to onsite utilities or parking. As Kurt indicates, there's an off-site lease agreement to address parking on a nearby site. So there's very little for the board to react to with this latest application. There's a matter to address seeker. It represents a type-two action pursuant to seeker. I've identified in my memorandum the specific code section that specifies it to be a type-two action. There's limited referrals that should be made, again, that was referred to by Kurt. And then finally, it's, you're obligated to have a public hearing.
And Ron, part of the stipulation was that it doesn't differentiate between seating and standing. Is that correct?
Yeah, they, there's two alternative seating plans. I think they were provided in your packages. So they've identified a seating plan for the tables and also a standing room for the performance venue. Those have been processed through the court action as well, and they've been accepted by the town building department. They're currently on file. The only, the only impact, the only reason this is before you now is that he's providing some slight increase in the building size that mandates that an amended site plan approval be granted, but it's not changing any of the counts. It's not changing occupancy in any way, and he's not impacting existing onsite parking, so there's no other site impacts other than a slight building addition in an existing garden bed and sidewalk area.
And Greg, just to speak to that too. The main reason for driving this is there was a mixture between standing and seating with the occupancy counts. In order to get people to stand near the stage, you had to move all the tables out of there. So basically what this addition is doing is providing dedicated seating for dining, and then there's dedicated seating area or standing area near the stage, but they're limited to the amount of people that can be in that building. So that's what kind of drove this whole thing, not having to move all the tables.
I think, yeah, it makes a lot of practical sense. I think my only thought is, given just the history and sort of sensitive nature of some of this, just to proceed carefully, and maybe it makes sense to, I'm wondering if it makes sense to hold on scheduling the public hearing until we get something back from the Fire Marshal.
We're not, just to speak to that, there's a dedicated fire lane in the front of that building that was part of the site plan, which we're not changing, and we'll have to provide the exits that we are required by the New York State Building Code. So there really shouldn't be any change to the Fire Marshal input on this.
I don't, I don't anticipate it, but I just, I'm not a Fire Marshal. You know, I just would personally feel, I don't know.
Well, it could be upon an inspection, it's easy enough to say all the tables that were there, you know what the occupancy is, otherwise now you got to go in there and do a head count. But, I mean, that's just, I don't know if that's a big deal for him or not, but that'd be something to find out, right?
Yeah, I think as part of the stipulation, the Fire Marshal can show up at any time during a performance, and there's records of who's in there and how many people are in that building, so it's pretty defined. And I'm sure we could get a response from the Fire Marshal prior to the public hearing as well, if that is scheduled.
Yeah, yep. So what's, what do you, what does the rest of you guys think? Just kind of, do we want to take, take these actions? I mean, the type-two seems to make a ton of sense. The referral makes a ton of sense. Those are, seem like no brainers.
Right.
Just, just hesitating a little on the public hearing personally, but I don't, I don't have a strong feeling.
Joey, and how long does it usually take to get, I know they have thirty days, County Planning. Have they been more responsive in terms of getting their?
If I ask them, they're more responsive.
Okay.
Yeah. If you get me plans, the whole package, I can send it out tomorrow.
Okay.
Because I do it electronically, but then they want the hard copies.
Okay.
I think we could set a public hearing.
Set it, and then just try and hustle and get those things before then.
Okay. So that would be July seventh is our next planning board meeting.
Okay.
Just to speak, I don't know if how important it is, but I won't be around that week. On the seventh, so.
And our next meeting will be August fourth, because Monday was going to cancel.
I won't be there on the fourth, yeah.
I believe we have a quorum on the fourth, if we want to go forward on the fourth.
Or I could have someone else here on the seventh, if that's.
I mean, I, I think.
Yeah, can you have someone else here on the seventh?
Yeah.
I don't think you can.
I don't think there's anything critical that, you know, but yeah, I could have someone here.
Yeah, let's do that.
No curveballs on the seventh.
Please, no.
All right, I'll make a motion to declare this application as a type-two action for one thirty Route twenty-two, Darrell's House.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. You got a, a motion for the referrals?
Uh, I'll make the motion as part of the planning board review of the project application. The board requests Mrs. Daley to make required referrals to the following agencies: Dutchess County Department of Planning, two thirty-nine GMO, Town Fire Marshal.
I'll second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. And let's make a motion for the public hearing.
And we're going to do that on the seventh, right?
Yeah.
Make a motion that we have a public hearing for Darrell's House, one thirty Route twenty-two on July seventh.
I'll second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries.
You need two hard copies or just electronically tomorrow for?
Two hard copies. I'll give Everett a hard copy, too.
Okay, okay. All right, very good. We'll get you those.
Out for the rest of the week, but I'll ask you to get in touch with you early next week.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
All right, thanks Kurt.
Have a good night.
Good night.
So next up, we have a new application, Richard Cordova, special use permit for an accessory apartment.
Um, good evening. I'm short. My name is Stephanie Fox. I'm the architect for Ricardo Cordova. This is the propiony. I just was hoping that maybe first I could give you a little, little history of the property, and then I'll go over what we're looking to do. So the home was built in nineteen hundred, and what I guess might be classified as a barn was built in nineteen twenty, according to the town records. A CO for the house was recorded, I think as part of some sort of legalization in twenty twenty-three, but it doesn't list the specifics of the house. Prior COs include one from nineteen eighty-two for an addition and two thousand nine for the reconstruction of the front porch. For that project, a front yard variance was granted in two thousand and five to allow the front porch to be reconstructed. There is record of an accessory apartment dating back to April two thousand and ten in the town records. I shouldn't say that it's illegal, just making a reference that there was an illegal accessory apartment there back in April two thousand and ten. And then documented in, in that memo from the town, it was stated that one of the previous owners claimed that the apartment existed when he purchased the home back in nineteen ninety-three. So the, there's been some semblance of an apartment there for, you know, thirty years or so, if not long. There was no action by the town after the discovery of the legal, illegal apartment in two thousand and ten, so it is still illegal. The property is classified as two eighty residential multiple property in the assessor's record. That, too, was done in two thousand and ten when the illegal accessory apartment was discovered. And the house is listed as a two-story, sixteen hundred fifty-two square foot old-style residence with five bedrooms and one bathroom, and the accessory building is listed as a two-story, sixteen hundred sixty-four square foot old-style building with three bedrooms and one bathroom. In December twenty twenty-three, the property had been deemed unsafe by the building department and was issued a series of violations. Those violations were corrected enough to sell the property, but the structures remained unsafe. My client purchased the property in January of twenty twenty-four. Upon purchasing the property, the main house was empty. However, the apartment over the garage had squatters still living there, even though the electricity had been shut off and the access to water and sewage had been shut off for an unknown period of time. My client went through the eviction process through the Dutchess County Sheriff's Department, and the squatters were finally evicted in January of twenty twenty-five.
Wow.
Shortly thereafter, we were issued a demolition permit from the town building department just to expose some of the structure and see what was going on, because as you can imagine, there was a lot of things to uncover. So today we are before you for two different applications. The first is an environmental permit application. That is because the property is located across from, I don't know if the lake has a name, the one that's on the corner.
Holmes Pond.
What is it?
Holmes Pond.
Holmes Pond, okay. And the various, there's various site improvements that we would like to make. The first on the house, we'd like to rebuild, the porch is still in, the front porch is still in good shape, but the stairs have been, are not safe. They need to be replaced. The side porch is in disrepair, and there was a bay window there, too, that was just crumbling. So we'd like to, you know, rebuild the side porch, remove the bay window. There is like some kind of shed structure in the back that's falling down, that's going to be removed. There was an independent shed structure that's going to be removed. There's another small metal frame shed behind the garage to be removed. Obviously, there's going to be need to do septic work and then also to pave the driveway because it's just gravel now. So that's the environmental aspect of it. The one thing that obviously should be noted is that the site is less than an acre in a four-acre zone. You can see in the upper left site plan, that rectangle represents the actual buildable area. So chances are, well, you know, going to need some approvals from the zoning board of appeals as well, just for the, maybe, well, even though the new, the new porch conforms, but it's, you know, modifying an existing non-conforming structure, so we'll have to figure out if there's a variance required for that. The second portion is, they would like to try to make a legal accessory apartment in there. It will not be three bedrooms. It will be one bedroom. It will be one bathroom. The house, same, it's not five bedrooms. It'll be four bedrooms, two baths. That's what's appropriate for the size of the home and what we can really fit there. In terms of the accessory apartment, it meets all of the requirements except for the thirty percent maximum allowance, which is thirty percent maximum square footage in relation to the house. We're at about forty-seven percent, so we'd need a variance for that as well. And that's just due really just to the size of the building. Couple things to note from a building permit.
How many square feet is the main house?
Um, the main house is, sorry, I have it here, sixteen fifty-two, whereas the accessory building is sixteen sixty-four, but that's the two stories. So the apartment is only going to be, I'm sorry.
That sounds like more than a hundred percent.
Well, no, that's, that's the total. So both floors and everything like that. So the apartment.
The footprint.
Pardon? Yeah.
The footprint is sixteen hundred?
So both, so two floors is sixteen sixty-four. So the apartment would only be.
Eight hundred and?
Sorry, I have to, I have to read with my glasses. So the apartment's nine hundred and twenty-nine square feet. So that equates to forty-seven point three percent of what the floor area of the house is.
Okay.
But then that allows you to do future expansion after, after it's approved, that allows you to do future expansion because of the size of the building. Yeah?
No, no, it's, it's, it's taking up the entire second floor. the entire second floor. Um, it's just that the first floor is?
Is it a possible rental also?
It, it's not.
In the future?
Right, yeah, no, there's no, there's no expansion.
All right, well, we'll let the zoning board worry about that.
Yeah. Um, but no, no. Um, I, I think when, um, those calculations were done, they were also taking into consideration that when the squatters were there, they were also inhabiting the attic space. Um, one, it, there's no way that it could really be considered a habitable space. And two, even if, um, you were to do something to it, you'd have to install, you know, limited area sprinkler system and that sort of thing. So, and we're not looking to do any of that. Um, so it's really just gonna be that nine-hundred-and-twenty-nine square foot, um, addition or apartment on the second level. Um, and so, um, that's, that's the hope of that. Um, kind of the gist, that's, that's the short version.
There's a lot going on there.
There is.
May I? Can I look at that?
And you, you said it was a four-acre zoning, but then this, this says it's R-three?
Oh, I'm sorry, three-acre zoning.
Right. And so it's, it's a one-acre. Um, I mean, procedurally, it sounds like you might need to go to the ZBA first, um, because what they decide might inform your plan.
Agreed.
So, I'd say, you're here just for, to socialize the concept?
Yeah, just because I think that this property has just been in disrepair for a really long time. Um, and, um, you know, my client is trying to buy it. It has bought it, is trying to make improvements to it. Um, obviously, um, you know, the structure's been there for over a hundred years, you know? Um, so there's challenges with that itself, but, um, you know, um, just trying to do the right thing and, you know, um, that, with the house is one thing. You know, that's, that's a little bit more, you know, clear-cut. Um, but the apartment, you know, again, there is an existing septic. You don't have to.
Yeah, no, look, I, I mean, it sounds like a good project in improving a property that needs to be improved. Um, just in terms of what our purview is, it's, 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 uh, the, the special use permit for the accessory apartment.
But that can't be granted until we get a variance.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just, it doesn't make sense, right?
Oh, I understand.
I think the ZBA is gonna be the gating factor, um, and then the environmental permit, which we'll just usually refer to our environmental officer. I'm not, when you said environmental permit, you talked about the stairs and the bay window. I don't think that's relevant for the environmental permit. I think it's just the, maybe the septic work, if it's within, if it's close to the, to the water. But again, I think, you know, we'll generally defer to, to Walter Artis on the technicalities of that. Uh, but we are procedurally the ones who need to approve it in the end, based on his review of that.
Yeah, well, then, I guess the, this, yeah, I guess it depends on how you classify how much of the disturbance, right? I mean, um, we're under five thousand square feet, that's for sure. But, um, you know, I was reading the definition. It says any construction. So, you know, again, I just want to be forthcoming about what we're doing, so that if we're in the building process and all of a sudden the stairs are being rebuilt, that, and it's just like, wait a minute, you didn't tell the board that we were supposed to do that. So I'd much rather give you the laundry list of things.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just trying to clarify that.
Okay.
And I, I, but I, again, I think, I think the, the order of operations would probably be, go to the ZBA and see what they say about everything. Um, and then confer with Wa, the code and, and Walter around the environmental permit, and then see where you land on the accessory apartment. I also, I would say, you know, when, when things like this come up, what we try to do is get things to be inconformant when there's the opportunity. So, um, you know, the code is the code, and it's written that way for a reason. And, um, I, I think there's probably an opportunity to the, I don't know, sort of the full, the full extent of the construction plan, but to make the accessory apartment, um, more conforming. Like, it's not, I mean, it's not necessarily a pre-existing, it's already been in violation, and you're doing significant remodeling. So if it, if you can make it thirty percent, or I think twelve-hundred square feet is actually the other max. Is that right in our code?
Yeah, it's twelve-hundred or thirty percent, correct.
Um, so, yeah, there's, you might, you know, design some storage that is, you know, you can use the building envelope, but make the apartment, you know, the appropriate size.
But again, that, I think, kind of bridges to what you were saying, that if you designate a certain area for a different use, you can call it what you want, but, you know, somebody perhaps less honest than my client might use it for something else, you know? So, um, I'd rather just be forthcoming and say, listen, this is the square footage that's there. This is what we have to use it for. We are making it more conforming to building code, because it's like almost right on the property line. We're gonna fireproof that wall. We're gonna make it safer. We're gonna do these things, you know, um, in order to make it better.
Can I see that?
Sure. Um, but, um.
Let me see this.
You know, um, it's just, again, you know, I'd rather do it on the up, because you, as, as well know, you don't know what's gonna happen if you call.
If we approve it as non-conforming.
You know, everybody's like, can I just call it storage? Well, you can, but until you put a couch and a TV in or something like that, you know.
If there's a wall there and there's a door to the outside, you know, that could be more of a storage situation. Or, I don't know, there's, there's ways that you could make it more harder to, to do it. But I just, yeah, I mean, I think we can cross that bridge when we, when we come to it. Um, but I, I just, our job is to try and get things to conform when there are opportunities to do so.
Well, I guess my question would be that if the zoning board granted the overed variance, right? That's the function of the, or is that you guys? You guys would do the, um, if it's the, the, whatever, the seventeen percent overed? That's a function of the planning board? Or is that the function of the zoning board?
The ZBA.
ZBA. So if they granted that, then does that become sort of null and void with you guys?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we, we would, that, their, their rulings are essentially code for that specific project from our perspective.
Okay. And then, do I need a referral from you to go to the zoning board?
Mm-mm.
No. Okay. And does the review for the environmental apartment start? Or is that gonna be?
I automatically send that to Walter. Because no matter what, you're gonna need the environmental permit, because you're